Yeah Greg, I guess we can go ahead and start with you guys.
Okay.
Okay. So we're back to the generator quote. In the very back here, I've got the, what we had was the one year, and that's why we come back. We wanted to go for three years, you wanna see what we could do for pricing. And then on this one here, that's what I've done, is repackaged it for three year. And so you can see that, I've got that for each one of you.
Thank you.
What you're gonna notice is I'm able to keep the prices exactly the same. And that first original year was priced at today's price. As I do expect, we'll have a price increase first of the year. Of course, you won't be in on that, unless we'll guarantee this pricing. The other thing that you've got on here, if you look at the load bank test, that's another change. In the third year, it is required by, it doesn't matter, Fire Marshal, CMS, Joint Commission, which one we go to, all of the different authorities having jurisdiction, that it would be a four-hour test. That four-hour test will also encompass a monthly and an annual, so we'll get it all knocked out in the one. But it is a little bit more expensive, so I wanted to point that out, 'cause it goes from 1.5 hours to four hours. Other than that, the pricing and everything keeps you the same. You've got the required load bank tests, fuel tests, and maintenance, basically to keep you compliant with all the, all the different authorities.
Been working alright.
Been working pretty good, we got a lot of the bugs worked out, we were having some issues, but mostly the non-seater things, but so far, since we've been some reprogramming, things have been going pretty good lately. Generator works great, just little electrical issues here and there.
What are payments due?
Payments are not due until after the services are performed. So you don't have to pay for it all upfront or anything like that, we'll bill them as we do.
Oh, okay.
So it's not an upfront bill. And in fact, if you look at that, that is, we call this an agreement. So if for some reason you didn't like what we were doing, I mean, this can be terminated with, you know, 30 days written notice.
Oh, I appreciate you doing the locked-in price, I mean, that gives good incentive to sign for more than one.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, 'cause I'm, you know, pricing it out, what the computer generates for labor rates and arch rates and everything right now, sure.
What's your tax rate there?
7.5, I believe. I don't think taxes are added in yet, are they?
No, it says without.
I'd move to enter into a three-year agreement. Sales and service.
Yep, coming sales and service.
Coming sales and service. Three-year contract with a generator for nursing home, the first year is $2,153.23, and second year is the same. Third year, added load bank test, $2,635.45. Brings the total to $6,941.91. End of three years.
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? No, I'll hold it in favor of the guy.
Alright.
Just need the chairman to sign one or two of them.
Yeah, couple of them. Do you need me to sign one for you too?
Yeah, the, Don?
Yes.
How many we need, do you agree?
I just need one of those, so.
You need one?
I need one, we'll do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna need to visit with you after this, but I got a couple of things to visit with.
Not a problem. Yep, let me get out of your way.
No problem. Previously, I talked to Terry on this door project, we're still dragging out. I'm running into some snags, and I'm needing your help. You know, last time we talked about it, you said you have to be willing to call, I might have you doing that. I've been dealing with a guy by the name of Kevin Engle, an overhead door.
Chairman of what?
Engle, E-N-G-L-E. I can give you his phone number. But what they are requiring, and this is something with the Fire Marshal's office, and I've heard of it and I know about it, but I didn't think we was gonna run into the snag. But what he's wanting me to do is run around the facility, either, well here's the first thing, either send a life safety code map, okay? Got this from Eric Johnson after our deal, we talked about life safety map. Now, this is incomplete. This does not have all the stuff done, and I said, "Well, why is that, Eric?" And he said, "Well, we didn't do the full job." So I didn't have to do any structural engineering, figuring out what's what. So I'm gonna, I'll hold on, this is a nice drawing, but it's not helpful. I've told this Kevin that, "Hey, I've got some blueprints we can look at," you know? But the bottom line is, he wants me to run around all these doors and put all this information in, and guys, I'm no engineer, I don't like the liability of me going, "Yeah, this, that, and the other." But when we started this thing with the original guy that came around that facility, you know, we looked at some drawings, and I said, "Well, here's, here's the best thing to do. Why not over-engineer, give me the highest rating fire door, and put them each one. There's no questions asked. The Fire Marshal, as long as it's there, is not gonna argue if this is a class whatever, if it's a top-of-the-line, we're done." That's near ballpark, that's just my opinion. But either we need to either have an engineer come back in, or figure out all this.
How did they price them? Did they price them?
I originally thought, Terry, that we priced them as top-of-the-line doors. And the last time that that guy that was doing our install, would be doing our install, you know, he looked around at things, and they had the wrong hardware, and this and that, and he asked me, "Would you wood or steel?" And I said, "Well, steel cheaper, go cheaper, I don't care." You know, we just need these doors in place to meet this criteria that's been put on us.
So how is it that they gave a bid?
They, they, I, when I told him, I said, "Bid the highest-priced doors," or, well, not highest-priced, but highest-rated doors.
But now they want something from you to verify what?
The Fire Marshal is wanting all these door companies to have this life safety map so they can verify what rating each of these doors need to be. And our stuff has been built in so many sections, and remodeled, and overdone, and.
I don't understand what you can give them besides the size and dimension.
I don't understand why, if they priced out the higher-rated doors, the question's getting higher. There's not gonna be anything wrong with having a higher-rated door in an opening.
Exactly.
In addition to that, Eric Johnson sat here on tape and said that he had prepared all of the specs for everything prior to this project happening. I mean, he's been paid $70,000, I would think that he has full schematics of the building, and everything completed.
I'll call Eric.
That would be wonderful.
He might make a couple phone calls, 'cause.
I'll call him.
I can give you it, 316-761-0101.
Kevin Engle.
Kevin Engle, yes.
In fact, I think maybe we should get a copy of everything that Eric did prepare, because we've never received that, correct, Don? I mean, I'm asking you because it would've been retained in your office, but he came in here when we had a commission meeting upstairs with a briefcase full of things, and flopped a few pieces of paper out on the table, but we've never retained copies of any of his plans, anything like that, you know? I mean, that should've been.
Yeah, I had him email me this, and.
Yeah, I don't know if they went that far, because we've scaled the project by.
Back, and that's why he, we told him, 'cause I got this, I was like, "Eric, this is not even showing my fire zones, or any of the doors, smoke compartments." And that's the explanation I got, so.
He was initially paid, though, with the grant that the county got, to do all of that, to assess what would need to be done upon any type of remodel, whether we did the whole, you know, kit and caboodle, the gold-plated, or not, I mean.
I don't know, that's just, I'm just telling you what I know.
No, it's, I understand, it's not, it wasn't your project, I'm just, I questioned him about his presenting information before.
I just don't want the liability on my shoulders of having individualized each of these doors with my best judgment, 'cause I'm not a specialist in that. So there's that. Another thing I've got is, wearing another hat, is rescue squad. Jeremiah's talked to you guys, or maybe it's just you, about replacing the gen, or the radiator in Rescue 66.
He mentioned they're up for all.
We're, yeah, you know, normally we like to get you two estimates for it, having a heck of a time. I've got one from S&amp;S, B.K. out here at their shop, you know, he just can't get away to give us an estimate. Kiebers don't seem like they're interested, 'cause they don't have the shop to bring it into. But I've got this one, this has been going on for a long time. The last few calls we've gotten, called out to I-70 for wrecks, have been kinda scary, of that truck overheating. Weather's cooling down, that is helpful. But, yeah, the final price is on the fact that it was. But I'm not getting any, any second bids to bring you guys, and this has been going on.
This is for that big rescue truck?
The big rescue truck, our main truck. And I'm not, I'm not getting any local estimates at all.
I think I better get it, get it done before it creates a better for all of us.
Yeah, we lose an engine in the thing, we got more problems, so.
Money seems to be there.
Yeah. Okay, I appreciate that, 'cause that's been stressing me for a while.
Do we need a motion, Don, for them to proceed, or is that just?
You guys wanna keep this, Terry?
Yeah, I suspect Don, I'll take a copy. I'd move that we authorize the rescue squad to accept the only bid provided within a reasonable amount of time for the repair of the rescue truck, radiator for a total of $3,050.50.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion? No, I'll hold it in favor of the guy.
Okay, thank you. Takes a, a stress off my mind. Finally, just one other question, and I guess I'll dress, direct this to you, Alexis. A lot of people are asking at the nursing home, why lately the nursing home board meetings haven't been recorded? There's a lot of people on edge up there, kinda wondering what's going on, is there an explanation I can pass back?
They are recorded, the, this most recent Friday one.
Wasn't.
Was not, but I actually wasn't even in attendance. But that's all being done with volunteers through post-rock open meetings.
Okay.
And they have been at every open session that they've, that we've had as a committee, as far as recording.
That's David.
David Monagerson started that, yes, and it's funded through donations.
Okay.
And they've, to, what I've seen being posted on the website is they're doing all the audio version, so they're not in video, but it's all audio.
Okay.
So, the other thing is, anybody is allowed to put in a KORA request, which is Kansas Open Records Act, K-O-R-A, and you can ask for the documentation, you know, on paper. You may have to pay for the paper, but the, the, um, open records officer, what are you called? Don, I'm sorry.
Freedom of Information.
Freedom of Information.
Yes, Freedom of Information Officer, would be Don. So anyone can request any of the documents.
Well, they're just so used to, you know, have this ability to see these meetings, and notice that was not happening, so they were.
I appreciate the question.
It's not a teleconference, are they?
We're all, every Friday is, yes, teleconference, but they, they have been coming in to record it, the audio, on the, right, 'cause.
I don't know, I haven't personally watched it myself, or listened, or whatever. Kinda forgotten about this whole mess, so.
Last week, the commission accepted the engagement letters from the attorney and the auditor. And they happen to be the same companies that are contracted with our own hospital, so we do have a familiarity with them. And nothing has been done yet, just, we had to establish that hiring process through the, it's through the commission directly, but the, the committee is who kind of debated and deliberated. We did interview another attorney for a law firm, and that's kinda how we came to the conclusion of who we would hire. So they're hired, and there's nothing in paper yet as far as anything other than their engagement letters.
Well, appreciate that. That's all I've got, you guys got anything for me, or questions? Appreciate it, guys.
I'll try to get ahold of those guys today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Greg, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Can we have that estimate?
Yes.
Is there a contract or something?
I've got one here.
He's got it, yeah, he's got it.
I've got one here.
One of each, right here.
From S&amp;S?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
For, whoever's referring you.
Yep.
Yeah, I've got one.
No, that's good, thanks.
Thank you.
Didn't want you walking out with it.
I will.
Okay, thanks.
Terry, ready for you, I guess?
We're just in time, huh?
Yeah, we're running a couple minutes early.
Morning.
Morning.
I came to see if it's okay to get some field dirt, we need it for the CD pit. We're required to cap it every three months, quarterly, and we're pretty much out of it, so.
You don't have any left from the dig?
We got some left, but we're gonna need it, so. I don't have enough to cover what we got right now. And a farmer approached me and asked if I'd want some, I said I'd check into it. I can get it for $60 a truckload, 10 and 12 yard truck. We'd be using our trucks.
What's that?
We would be using our trucks to get it, so.
We're loading and hauling. They just have a pile someplace?
They got a few piles, just, just north of the landfill, probably two miles. It's, uh, a little cold. Anyway, I'm just seeing if it'd be okay if we did that, we could sure use everything he can give us, I.
Well.
'Cause I can pile it along the north side, running east and west. And then also, we have something I filled in, I can just pile it there and then just start pushing it back to the east.
How many loads do you think you're talking?
I don't know. I'll bet you he's probably got 20.
Well, we can discuss with Michael if he's got anything closer, or not.
Okay, well, I've, I've talked to him. He's, he said, "Good luck," he said, "That's a rare commodity, I can't, I can't find any for you," so.
I don't think we would have any, anywhere reasonably close.
Anyway, I approached him a couple times about it, just to see if he knew where I could get some.
Uh, we'll talk to him when he comes in, and then he, could, I'll, I can coordinate with you on the deal, and.
Yeah, 'cause we're needing, I need to get, I need to get a cap on that thing.
Trucks available?
Yeah. It's something I could have, or part-time help James, he could, he could, him and I could just do it ourselves, if they can bring us up.
You mean, spread it yourselves?
Well, no, we could go pick it up, it's close enough, I mean, it's a couple miles away, so. If, if it's gonna hurt them.
You mean, without using the highway department personnel?
Right. Whatever he wants to do.
You both have your CDLs?
I do.
Well, we'll see, I mean, if he's got.
He, he could probably.
If they're not hauling gravel, they could.
Right. Okay.
If they're hauling gravel, they have a truck available anyhow, so.
Right, right. And also, USD 298 is tearing their wooden benches off their bleachers at the football field, and wanted to know if they could get a deal coming out to the landfill.
Yeah, I think so.
Are they gonna replace them with?
As far as I'm concerned, they can. We've always done that for the cities and the schools, and wave defeat.
That's all I got.
Did you prepare this year's budget for the landfill?
I just filled out a little bit of paperwork on it, and.
But I mean, you're.
Turned it to Don.
Okay. And am I understanding their, which equipment or what trucks are shared property between the highway department and the landfill?
Tractor, mower, uh, semi, the new semi, for a trailer to haul.
That's it?
Yeah, that's probably about it.
And so do you do interdepartmental billing for the maintenance, or?
No, they do.
They draw the maintenance?
Well, we've been changing oil and stuff like that, greasing, lubing it, and.
The tractor.
Yeah, small things.
So is there any interdepartmental billing happening there, between the two? Are you getting billed for any usage of the equipment, or are they getting billed for any usage of the equipment? Like, are these split 50/50 in the purchase price, or?
They, they bill us when they have a, driver takes the truck to Salina, and fuel.
They, okay, the highway department bills the landfill because we're using their personnel? To drive the truck to Salina?
It's been doing that since I've been here, so.
And for fuel? And who paid for that semi?
It was 50/50, and the highway department and us.
Okay, thank you.
Everything else okay out there?
Yeah.
Still getting trashy? Still getting some trashy on our end?
Yeah. Yeah, we had quite a bit come in this morning.
How is that new CD pit?
It's, right now, it's kinda, with all that rain, I was, I was gone for a week of vacation. I couldn't believe all the raining out here. It's starting, it's starting to dry out, there was puddle in one part, and I went over it the other day, and.
You were going through the seven inches of rain?
Yes. Yeah. And I couldn't do it, when I come back, our rain gauge was full, it holds six and a half inches of.
Yeah, it rained. Forgot several months that we hadn't got in one shot.
Yeah. They were caught up. That's all I got.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Eric.
Have a good day.
Is this letter something we need to address, or is that just, we already knew it was closing?
Michael, I think they just have to finish getting those big rocks out of it, and they could.
Is this all correspondence from today, or?
What's that?
Is it? Did you guys read that before I came in?
No.
Law offices, Driscoll Law Office sent a letter to the commissioners advising us that the Block Family Venture LLC gravel pit is now closed, and would like us to remove any of our property from that location. Street plumbing fan coil units. $5,350, is that part of what we've already contracted?
I believe that's part of it.
It said, "All work is complete."
Yeah. We can ask Don, but I understand, I noticed that the contract invoice, and our service invoice, so.
Okay, that makes sense. And furnace issues for Lincoln Park Manor, $65 an hour, and an hour and a half for an extended price of $97.50. I assume that means they got it fixed?
That's the contract, I believe, for the auditors.
Is this, oh. Lindbergh, Vogel, Pierce, Ferris, chartered. This is a proposed engagement letter for the auditing firm for 2019. I guess it would be for the year 2018, right, that it's, would be paid in 2019? They didn't give us a price.
Do you know what the cost is on that, Don?
She just walked out. Okay, it says fees for any other work not covered, oh no, that's not in there. Work not covered, we would want work covered. I don't see a price. Don, did the auditing firm send a quote with their bid, or a bid price, I should say, with their?
I think it's totally in there with that engagement letter.
It's not, unless.
Says how many hours, or how much per hour, normally.
It just says, "Our fees for these services will be at our standard hourly rates plus out-of-pocket costs, such as report production, word processing, postage, travel, copies, et cetera. And our standard hours, hourly rates vary according to the degree of responsibility involved and the experience level of personnel assigned to your audit. Our invoices for progress payments may be presented from time to time during the engagement, and the final invoice will be presented on filing of our, of our report." Our invoices for progress payments may be presented from time to time during the engagement and the final invoice will be presented on filing of our, of our report. The fees are also based upon anticipated cooperation from your personnel and the assumption that unexpected circumstances will not be encountered." I didn't see any numbers. It's an interesting way to do business. Sign me up, I'll book you later.
Did you ever get a chance to look at that?
I didn't go through it thoroughly, um... Is this, was this provided to us from Lincoln Park Manor or is this what?
Everything, that's highway.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did we ever get a list then and any adjusted? I got the one email that.
Whatever you would have gotten on the email is probably in that book.
Are we approving this? Is that what you mean?
We need to.
Is anything gonna be included in this for our purchase, our recent purchases of, uh, office?
That was, that was effective.
That was from twenty seventeen years, it's taken us a lot to get everybody to turn everything in.
Oh, oh, December, okay, I see, December thirty-first. Does someone sign off on these, like, all the different fire departments? Does someone sign off and say, "Yes, this stuff is here"? I mean, it's pretty detailed.
They send it out and they check it off. And then we, anything that's changed, we update the electronic.
And is this what we hold our insurance policy coverage based on?
No. Our insurance policy coverage is done as a separate.
How do they do contents then? Wouldn't we have to supply them an inventory list for contents or?
Well, we could use it, we could use it as an inventory for certain things, yeah.
They do an estimated, it's a certain percentage of the building value.
Really?
Yes.
It's another good way to do business. Don't find anything expensive?
It's probably better than that.
Yeah.
Because then they replace everything.
Yeah, it's replacements that are replacing with thirty-year-old pieces.
Well, let's just say the highway department office slash shop burnt down, I highly doubt that some of that equipment that we would have stored in there would be less than a percentage of the building.
Equipment is different, it's valued differently. It's built out separately. You have your building and your content value of your building, then we have vehicle coverage and then we have equipment coverage. There's three different aspects of insurance.
Sawz and welders and that's all separate? Well, that's what I'm saying. I highly doubt the value of the building of the highway department. A percentage of that would be more than the dollar amount of if you part-pieced out every piece of equipment that you needed to replace.
I think the tools and equipment are listed as tools and equipment, it's a little unfair for me to sit here and say how it is and isn't. The contents of the building themselves, the desks, the chairs, the paperwork inside is valued as part of the building.
Well, I got to see pay rates of some of those people that run our pay camp, uh, insurance policy program, it's a pretty good deal, so they must be making it somehow.
Well, I don't think that they're the only insurance company that collects them more than they pay out.
No, they're all making money.
I think most all insurance companies have that. At least we are part of taking.
Well, when they're doing it.
Mutual, Omaha or.
Yeah, no, it seems like they're actually doing a good job balancing their funds. I will agree with that. God bless you. So the LPM stuff is in here with this?
The part that we, um.
Yeah. Dawn, is this the list that got sent to, uh, Folsden Siefen?
I haven't sent anything to Folsden Siefen.
Okay. So do they sign anything, the department heads or? So we just approve it based on, I mean, I've never seen half of this stuff, so.
You're welcome, you're welcome to go check it all out if you want to.
We send that based upon a permanent out, they make corrections, they mark off if there's changes, they add to if there's changes. We up, update the file, we throw the rest of it, we don't keep what they send back to us. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to have anything in our vault because we have nothing of it.
No, it looks pretty detailed. Although I didn't see anything from the attorney's office. Is that not included or?
I'm sure it's in.
They're in alphabetical order, oh, there.
Got the other, we can go ahead and take care of you and finish up that audit stuff later. Running, handling for stuff later.
Well, we're getting a little closer, just wanted to give you an update.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you guys?
Pretty good.
Good, thank you. Um, getting a little bit closer, um, so so everything is almost upon us, this is the Lincoln Elementary Project. So, um, we will be, um, uh, as you remember, Brad Malacot is, is, um, the engineer on this project, so, uh, we will be putting a bid in, in both the, um, uh, Lincoln paper and this line of paper because, you know, we have to have at least three bids and so there's not, there's not enough HVAC companies um, in, um, the area and that would, uh, catchment area of the Lincoln Sentinel. So, um, we're, um, thinking that, um, probably maybe even start construction a little bit before school's out, but we're not sure on that, just because, um, from the people I've talked to, it's gonna be really, really hurried to get it done by when we start school in August. Um, and I also wanted to update you, you did, um, give us a little bit of money for the high school project, um, that, um, bid, um, the original bid we gave to you guys was seventy thousand, a little, and some on, on dollars. Well, when we got that bid from, uh, Mr. Malacot, he did not specifically look at the units. So when we got the bids in, opened the open bid, um, and you might be aware of this, the bids were right around, I think the low bid was a hundred and forty-eight thousand. So needless to say, the board was, um, exasperated, frustrated, um, so Mr. Malacot apologized, um, he did not bid the correct size unit. So, um, I don't really know where we're going with that, um, it may just get tabled. We're gonna be talking about it tonight, but we may just not, I, I don't know, I mean, that's my hunch right now, is it's just gonna get tabled or it's going to be changed a lot. Because after we got that, I came that day, was going to talk to you about the project and he called, uh, Warren and it went up another thirty, thirty thousand, so we're sitting at about a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
Is that specifically the, um, gymnasium?
It was the gymnasium and the wooden metal shop.
Yeah.
To get rid of those direct, I know. So, it's, it's been a very frustrating, very frustrating venture, so.
Maybe your big project will come in cheaper.
Yeah, and he's, he has promised us that we are, he is good on the firm, on the figures that he gave us, there was some concerns, concerns that he was so far off, um, on that project, but he said no, so I just kinda wanted to give you guys a heads up.
Has he offered any compensation for his services and that, for you all or?
Um, no, not that I know of, so, we're, like I say, we're just, um, he'd have to offer, offer his compensation from about a hundred and ten thousand, because we just don't have the money to do it.
Well, no, not to cover it, I just meant for his mistake.
Yeah, I agree with you.
I'm just questioning.
Yeah, I don't know what, what do you do? So, anyway, just a little heads up on that, so I appreciate this, I'll keep you guys updated, hopefully in January we'll.
Yes, thank you.
Yep, yep, thank you very much, have a great day.
Good day.
You too.
You too.
I guess I would just question, the only thing I know we've talked about that I can say that I've ever been here for in the inventory is we pay for the, uh, fees to maintain the copier at the county attorney's office, but I don't see the copier in the inventory. Unless it's named something that is inconspicuous here.
Well, I think, isn't that calculated by the copy or something, Dawn?
I think they just lease it, so I don't.
So we don't own it? Is yours leased in your office?
No.
We do own it? So we just don't know?
I'm gonna have to get a new one. So. Normally what we do is county attorney will buy our copier and we send our copier over to the appraiser's office, but it is.
You mean your old one?
Yeah.
You just rotate?
Kind of rotating out and Bear's is dead, ours is newer death. So I'm not sure it's gonna be.
So do you think the county attorney one might be listed under general fund or something?
I think it's a leased piece of equipment, so it's not listed.
Okay.
But I don't know that question, I'll have to ask.
And the only computer I saw was an iPad, is that, she doesn't have a regular desktop computer?
I think she has one.
Hello?
Hello?
How are you?
I'm good.
I haven't talked to him.
Oh, will you come up tomorrow and install that?
Yes.
We'll be on that line.
Okay. I may not be sane.
No, no, I just, they didn't even dawn on me that tomorrow's election.
It may be crazy. Actually, in the morning, there's a very, very quiet.
Morning, I need you to just draw out where you want it. I'm sorry. Your equipment showed up Friday, uh, for the courts and that, so you just let me know when you're ready to roll work, we'll be ready whenever you are.
Okay.
Except for when he knows we're three weeks out.
Yeah, I do need two to three weeks, we gotta start planning, I mean, even if you don't know the exact date, if we can at least put data out there, it's easier to move things around a little bit than to try to drop something in on our schedule right now.
Okay.
We have no more jury trials this year, right? Isn't that what we said? There were no more jury trials scheduled for this year, correct?
January is, I think there's more, possibly.
Yeah, and I understand, you know, there's a lot of pieces that'll have to kinda come to get in place for the puzzle to finally get put together, but anyway, I just wanted to let you know the equipment's in. We'll go ahead and just get this project done for HR since it's kind of a side, uh, court level.
Okay, we'll, we'll figure out. We'll get with everybody and figure out what we're doing exactly and then we can get a date for order of production.
Well, that's, that is on the list as you guys have to decide.
Yeah.
Because not only equipment, but then we need electrical and we need that.
Yeah, I thought, I thought he was here to put it in today.
No, no, no.
Well, we're here tomorrow for one.
I, we called and talked about it last week.
That offers a thing.
Unfortunately, for upstairs on the court level, I've gotta get, uh, stuff out of the jury room first and then whatever work you need done, then we can go install the equipment, uh, for the county attorney's office, so I can't.
Have you been up there today?
I was up there today.
Okay, 'cause she, she asked me this morning if I knew.
Like I said, really, I need, I gotta have one piece of the puzzle done so I can then start to play out what we're gonna do. Okay, that's all I need.
Okay.
See you tomorrow morning.
Is it okay if we drop that desk in there tomorrow too before you guys start installing?
Yeah, they'll set the desk and then if, is, is she here, she didn't start till Wednesday. Well, somebody will be coming in, I mean, we'll be glad to, you know, kind of lay out stuff, but once we build it, we can't move it, so.
And you aren't building it tomorrow?
Yes, yes, or HR only.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you very much for having me interrupt.
We may just be taking the pieces down and then bringing them back, 'cause I was gonna use them tomorrow, so. We'll figure it out, it's okay, it's a highly movable desk, so.
Yeah, the desk is a lot more movable than Marp is when we get it out, so, okay.
It weighs three thousand.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Take care.
Thanks, Ken.
See you tomorrow.
You don't have a stressful week or anything, Dawn?
No.
So, we won't for this.
You need to purge sugar from your body either, so.
Oh, yeah, no, you're gonna be really.
Sugar eating it up all week.
Yeah, there you go.
Ready to crash next week. Okay, sorry, didn't mean to.
Three weeks, did he say any? Three weeks, did he say any, like, is it this month?
He needs, they are booked out for installs, three weeks, so, we need to know what we're doing as soon as possible, so that we can get it on the calendar. Otherwise, it's gonna be January first, and they're not gonna be able to get here.
Yeah.
And, and he told me on the phone last week that actually they were out three to four weeks, so I'm thinking like three and a half, four.
But he doesn't have yet that, yet?
Everything is in.
Oh, it all is?
It is all here.
Okay.
And so I asked him if they could go ahead and install human resources, and he actually thought it would be a couple of weeks before they could do that, so they must have a hold.
Okay.
Or cancellation.
I've retained motion to approve the inventory.
I move.
I'll second.
I've motioned a second, approve the inventory for December thirty-first, seventeen. All those affairs out. Well, we were talking for you about here, it's ten o'clock, Monday.
Sure, sure, yeah. And we, we're not having anything else on the agenda, right?
We were just gonna do that.
Okay.
And then we're, we're canceling the Tuesday.
Yeah, so we'll just be canvassing on November twelfth?
Yes, ten o'clock.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, were you able to have a discussion, I don't remember who the judge, I think that's the title they gave them, it was, at the other polling place, but, remember we had the ballots that were?
Not tallying, I have that on my list to talk about tomorrow morning.
Yeah, not to give you another thing to do, but just because sometimes they are so close, it'd be nice to count them all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello.
You're just in time.
Ready for me?
Yep, just in time.
All righty.
We're running on schedule. We do have a letter, I don't know if you got the copy of it or not. Block family of interest?
Yes.
Okay.
Tomorrow, I'm gonna try to get that cleaned up as soon as I can here. Weather permitting. Received iron bids through three locations on OS one oh five. And it looks like the little bid came in as, uh, well-born sales.
Where's that?
Salina.
Salina.
Forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents, uh, delivered. Uh, the next closest bid came in at forty-seven thousand, three twenty-seven ninety-seven. And that was with an addition of an item that he had to no bid, we'd have to buy something else through another vendor in order to get to that price. Otherwise, his bid was thirty-nine thousand, five twenty-seven, but he didn't have all the materials, some of it he can't get, so. And then L and M, theirs was fifty-two thousand, two sixty-four. So with all the, little bit on steel, plus the expense of them driving it, it costs sixty-three thousand, four seventy-two thirty-seven. And of course, it would have our labor on top of it.
Did they give any indication when they're gonna be up there driving, piling on the other project?
I don't know as far as when they're gonna start driving, piling, they were supposed to start this morning, setting up, uh, signage, and start dirt work as soon as the signs were in place. Since it rained a little bit last night, I don't know if they got held up, I didn't hear otherwise, but I didn't run out there and check either, so.
I think they probably walked a little bit, we got a tree and dropped pretty quick, I think.
I hope so.
They haven't moved anything in yet?
Not that I've heard.
They've probably moved in.
Now, one of our, uh, biggest feats on that job's gonna be figuring out how we deal with the, the power, and I think I got most of it under control. That's the main, main feeder line that feeds the city of Lincoln, and it also feeds the pump station just north of town, so. But both the city of Lincoln and the pump station can power themselves. Well, pump station will have to do a scheduled downtime, I guess it's the workhorse of the whole pump pipeline, so, they need to be running unless it's a scheduled time down, so it's gonna take some logistics to get it all into place.
That's for this bridge, you mean?
Yes, for one oh five. The way it sounds, earlier in a month would be better than later in the month with them. But, uh, those steel prices are good for twenty days, the steel market is very volatile right now, and that's all the longer they're gonna let those bids be good.
I'm sorry if I'm asking, repeat yourself, what did, did you just give us a total price from the, the bid you got from the piling, driving the, and then that forty-seven thousand and something?
Yes, sixty, sixty-three thousand, four seventy-two thirty-seven.
And then, you think your own bridge crew is gonna be able to follow up on that relatively immediately after that's scheduled, or?
Should be able to, yes.
So then I think we should just move forward with that, that sounds like a good price to be sustaining a bridge that needs to be reconciled?
Yeah, we got a little bit of time to get the permits in and everything yet too, they've been submitted, but we haven't got back, so hopefully.
Do we need a motion for the project?
Yeah, we will.
I move to proceed with Bridge Project OS one oh five. Tell me the name of that company, I'm sorry.
Uh, L and M Contractors, will do the pile driving.
With L and M Contractors and?
Well-born sales.
Well-born?
Well-born.
Well-born sales.
I'll second the motion. Darren, further discussion? No, all of the persons are out.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, as you guys are aware, we did get our new motor graders here about a month or so ago, uh, the guys are getting along with them pretty well. I was thinking, and it's up to you guys if you are in favor of it, but I was wanting to wait until possibly spring before we sell the other motor graders, just in case we'd happen to have a bad winter and we needed extra motor graders, and/or the operators are not quite comfortable enough to be running them to plow snow with.
Well, you'd probably be a couple months now, even, getting them listed, getting them on auction probably, so, I don't think there's, as long as we don't need the funds in the account, in your account, for this year's budget, I don't see a problem with it.
I thought we held a backup one for that purpose.
We do have one spare that we do keep, but yes.
I don't know, I think, you know, in the spring, you probably stand up, get a better price than you're going to in the winter time, man. I would think work starts, people start getting work, they're gonna be more interested in buying equipment than they are going into winter.
Have you already listed the backhoe that you replaced?
No. We usually just save everything for one sale, once a year, once over two years, however it works out.
The more equipment you can list, the more chance you're gonna get people coming to look at us, they're gonna travel a great distance to look at one piece of equipment. A lot of this equipment gets bought, goes overseas or South America and.
Did you include anything in your budget that, for next year, that had that income at a minimal value, or?
I would have to do some looking, I always have some reimbursement in there, but I can't remember where.
I know we did.
Where we put that for sure, we had some.
That would be my only question is.
If you, if you scheduled it for two thousand eighteen.
Cash flow, just as long as we don't run into cash flow.
Sixty thousand, for eighteen reimbursements.
Have we sold anything in eighteen?
As far as equipment, no.
You know, the question would be, have they got a budget to carry you through? As long as you have the budget to carry you through, I don't think there's a problem.
Sure. Let's say reimbursements. And that's not. Sure, about thirteen thousand. On reimbursements?
This year?
I think that's right. I think.
Fuel from other department?
Yeah, I think you had forty-six thousand come in. And we'd budget sixty, so there's still thirteen thousand. If we look back at them.
Well, if you think the rates would be better in the spring to do it on Purple Wave, why don't we just list them on our own website, just leave them up there for a while, for local purposes?
You know, we used to do sealed bids.
Purple Wave will want that.
Yes, a lot more.
All the old patrol cars were three hundred and fifty dollars, and now they're running twenty-five hundred on Purple Wave.
I don't, I haven't. It'll change a lot, because we have pretty big expense in October's. So this is not a very clear picture of how much money is there.
What are we at in the percentage for the overall department?
Well, we're only fifty-nine, but you gotta remember, we bought all those rivers, so that's, so that's gonna eat up a lot of it. But Don, I'll tell that next week, or the next week, by the next meeting, Monday meeting. I think he's probably right, I think we're probably better off, we can move them in the spring. This is not a good time of the year to be selling things, there's a lot of taxes are due, Christmas is coming, tax appropriations go out in January, some townships or something might be interested in bidding on some of these road graders too.
We've kinda been keeping an eye on this, uh, grapple bucket, that we can outfit to fit our loader for when we're pushing and piling trees. Uh, I think currently the next bid's at four hundred dollars, and the sale ends this week on it.
It's on Purple Wave?
Yes.
We don't have a grapple?
Not for a loader, we don't, we do for our skid steer.
And milk scrap bars?
Yeah. And it's been setting fairly stagnant, you know, I don't know if somebody's got a bid on it.
It's spring hill?
Yeah. But, you know, if we go for a brand new one, you're probably looking at over twenty-five thousand dollars. And it would be a lot nicer.
What are you thinking?
What's that, as far as price?
Price.
You know, if we can keep it below two thousand, kinda my ballpark number. So we will have to do a little bit of outfitting to make it fit ours, but it'll be quick attachment, it'll fit either one of the loaders when we're done.
It would be handy, I mean, when you use hard on the farm, everything. I, you know, as far as I'm concerned, if you can get it for a couple thousand, I don't have a problem with it.
I mean, that's basically iron parts.
Tree work and stuff would be great.
Trouble is, when you're doing that, you're using something new, you're gonna bend it, and every, you know, this is.
That's a pretty well-built one there.
You gotta be careful with that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
I think it's worth it, that couple thousand, I don't think it's gonna hurt us.
Very well, and still trying to get caught up on our mowing and a little bit of the blading, you know, it just hasn't dried out enough to get on a lot of the dirt roads, some of them we have been able to. Uh, trying to finish up the bridge up by East of Barnard, or the covert project there, I think they're gonna try to get some oversized rock in the void that's down there today, if we can get in and out of the pit all right. Continue along with that process, and hopefully it dries out, so everybody can get stuff done, so we can get a snow fence up, and.
I know the comment on that project, Mike, and it's not what's being done, is the fact that the guys left the machine in the bottom of the ravine over the weekend.
Really, okay, I'll make sure.
I think that was probably not a wise idea, 'cause it holds a lot of water at times, but, uh, several area farmers commented on it. And, uh, living down on Salt Creek, we know better than to leave things overnight down on bottoms, so I, you know, it's just one of those things, but it has set in the bottom of that ravine all weekend, and actually a few days before that too, I think, so.
Are you saying you don't have any faith in the National Weather Service?
Well, I have faith, I have, I have faith.
I don't have any faith in them.
I, you know, I, as I said, I just think it's a practice, we shouldn't be doing it.
No, we should.
I mean, you know, we, there probably was no problem there, 'cause we weren't forecast for big rains, but it's just something the guys have to be aware of, that you don't leave stuff in the bottom.
Kerry was in about some filter, he talked to you about maybe getting some filter hauled, or them using some equipment to haul it, or?
He had some that he'd like to get moved from over near the tree pile at some time, but as far as buying any, I don't know.
He, he's located some.
Okay.
For sixty dollars a load, we hauled.
Okay.
Couple miles, I think he took them away.
Couple miles more, he said.
So, if we can put something together there, if you can get a, get with him, and I don't know where.
He thought they could maybe even cover the labor, so that you don't have to send anyone over there.
Yeah, if.
If they could timely coordinate it.
If need be, I mean, if you don't have the people available or whatever, so.
We load and haul though, correct?
Yeah.
Is it piled, or?
Yes.
My understanding is it's piled.
He said, yeah.
Okay.
And he said, we'll.
Maybe about mile or mile and a half north of the elevator, or way into them, that's where it is.
Okay, yeah, I'll get with him and see what we can get.
He thought, what, twenty loads? I think he said twenty or thirty loads maybe.
He's just gonna stockpile it for the C and D pack, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
And go ahead and cover it, I think, because he said it has to be done quarterly.
Yeah, he, he said he'd cover.
Sometimes it may need to be.
They, they can cover it, they still got their nose around it and they can. Something they can fit in on days that can't do anything else or something. I don't know what it's like trying to get to the piles, if you can get to them. But it's relatively weathered ground.
And we'll take a look.
I, sorry, I missed last week, but I did see that you guys had put in the application for that new program that was coming down that we talked about a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, yes, the bridge bundling, correct.
And you did that for the two that we talked about, right?
Yes.
And when were we supposed to hear back something? The end of the year?
I'm hoping by the end of the year.
From the state at least, and then it goes on to the?
Yeah, I think they were supposed to be submitted the first or something.
Yeah, they had to be in by November, or actually October thirty-first.
Yeah.
And then the state's got to sort through.
They have to go through their process of?
Well, I just had another concern brought to me about the bridge that we talked about. I keep forgetting, is it sixty-five? Yeah, sixty-five. And, um, I know a couple of months ago when we talked about it, you thought there could be some things done that wasn't a full replacement. So if we're not eligible for that program, and since we already got denied for our one that we applied for this year and we're already pushing back everything a year, maybe we could do some comparative numbers and see, you know, if we get the grant, we can replace it, great, that's wonderful. But if we can't, I think we still need to address it because it's, it's been a problem for a long time. A lot of people are driving equipment across there that, I mean, they're really, to go around is, I mean, you're on the highway or you're miles south.
Main problem was the approach to approaches on the.
I believe that's what it is. It's a three span with a.
Approach on each side and then the actual bridge.
But the actual bridge itself is, is the truss, so then there's approach spans, so. Um, and that one reason why we decided to go for the replacement instead of rehabilitation is the fact that that one pier is separating and has a crack in it. So I don't know the extent it would take to shore that up, being a limestone pier.
In the center?
Solid. I believe it's the west abutment.
Oh, okay.
Or no, no, wait, I think it's east. East pier. Yes.
Well, I would like to see some follow-up on that, especially if, if we're pushing it off into the future as far as the, I think it's just becoming kind of dangerous and not just a concern, but a liability, in fact.
It is supposed to, isn't it?
Yes. And if you had a chance to get the, uh, number and address for Unruh and Brian Taylor, so I can follow up on?
Unreal.
The, they on that, Taylor and Unruh on that property, the Highland Dam.
Is it, I didn't realize it was in that name too.
Yeah.
I, I am, I have contact with Taylor and I will, I'm sorry, I did not send that to you.
I think that's his father in law.
Okay. I didn't know that name. Is that on the, on the property? Okay. But I can do that. Thank you for the reminder.
That's all I have for today. If you guys have anything else for me? Well, hopefully you guys have a good week and we don't get snow at the end of the week up there.
I could use the drive, if you can do anything about it.
I think everybody could use a couple of dry weeks to get caught up.
If you believe the National Weather Service, I'm not sure we're gonna have a dry week. I don't know where last night came from.
Woke up, looked outside and was conveniently surprised. Alright, we all have a wonderful week.
Thank you.
Okay, Dawn, are you ready?
I have to write my things down now because I forget to put it in minutes when I come over.
Do what?
I said I have to write it down because I forget to put it in the minutes when I come over. Okay, so last week, um, in the minutes, they corrected, and I think I didn't put them in there. They struck out Randan's because I thought he asked for fifty cents and somebody else thought he asked for a percentage of an increase. So he asked for a two percent increase is what we looked back at on the video, which is nineteen cents per household per month. So I need to know if you guys have made a decision or when you want to make a decision. We will have to let the cities know before, at least their December meetings, probably a week before them to, for them to do their paperwork.
I didn't say how, how, how long does it take this to go into effect? Is this a?
It, well, what the contract says is that it can increase on January first of a given year.
On January first?
But, um, I know the city of Lincoln, they pass the ordinance in order to approve it, and then it has to get on the city bill. And I wanna say that for trash, they're billing, a couple of the cities bill in December the new rate and a couple of them bill in January. So some are in a rear reaches and some of them are bill ahead for the trash service.
So, just, I know you've already explained this to me, but just for one more clarification. You, you are collecting those fees from each city and it's, we are trafficking that billing through your office for each city.
Yes.
In addition to what we bill as a county per occupied part, uh.
Correct, correct.
Parcel.
For what's collected.
So the.
The residents, they have it collected.
The cities bill for their residents and they each have their own separate policies is how they do it. But, um, they bill for their residents the trash collection and our solid waste fee. And then we also charge an administrative fee of twenty-five cents per household. So they bill that and they send it to us. Then our office assesses on the tax rule, all of the residents that are outside of the unincorporated areas. Unless they have trash service through a city, which some of them do. Sylvan just passed the rule last year that if you have city utilities, you automatically get city trash. Because they had people that was setting out trash, Randy didn't know he was picking it up, they were never paying for trash. So they've adopted that. That's how the city of Lincoln is. If you're receiving services, then you pay even if you're outside of the city limits. So we bill that. Then we also bill businesses. So our office is doing the billing for the businesses. And then we're adding on to the tax rule for the household seventy-two dollars per year. Solid waste disposal fee. It's just the disposal fee, okay.
On the businesses, you just did the tonnage, right? Not the collection.
We do the tonnage or the seventy-two dollars per year.
But he, he charges the businesses.
To actually collect it, yes. So what, when Randy is billing the business, so like, we'll use the French theater as an example. I pay Randy to pick up my trash at the landfill or at the, in my dumpster. I pay him to deliver it to the landfill. So I pay him a collection fee to just, to take it to the landfill for me. I'm paying the county seventy-two dollars a year to dispose of at the landfill, to have the right or the ability to dispose of. So there's two separate fees.
You're paying on your water bill or whatever bill.
No, I'm not paying.
Businesses are different than residents.
That, that's not true because in Sylvan, my business pays the city and pays.
Are you sure you're paying trash on their city bill or are you just paying? Then we need to call Jennifer and, and visit with that because she should not be charging you trash for a business.
Okay. Well, I.
That, that's where the confusion comes in, but commercial properties are not supposed to be being charged trash on their city utility bills. It's only residential properties.
So then you're saying, but, but they're still, well, you're saying, so you're billing it as if you would all the other residential parcels in the county. You're billing the businesses and the residential parcels outside of city limits and the city limits are collecting for inside of so many city limits.
Residential. We bill businesses regardless. Nothing goes on the tax rule for businesses unless they are delinquent and refuse to pay their bill. Then that's what that hearing is for.
Two, two problems I have with this. The one is we, our county government and then our city governments are performing a billing service for a private business. I mean, that in and of itself is just, uh, it doesn't, I, according to what I've heard from the city meetings and Sylvan, they're in debt because of price ranges varying with Randan and then they're not, they hadn't even charged over the last year enough per household to cover what it costs them. So they're not even, they're not even able to collect. Like you get a twenty-five cent fee per.
If they're not charging, it's because somebody didn't pay attention to the letter that we sent out to them saying what the total household price should be. And then they're supposed to, because when we send them a letter, they're not, they shouldn't be, they should not have any money going out of their coffers whatsoever because they're charging for the collection, they're charging for the disposal, they're charging for our administrators, and I think most of the cities are charging administrative fee themselves.
Well, the way they've calculated it, and I don't know, it could have been because they set a resolution in January and there was, or, you know, October and there was a price change in January, et cetera, et cetera. But I, that is one of the ongoing discussions that I've heard several times is that, that it's not even being covered there. That actually the city is subsidizing the process. But over and above that.
They shouldn't be. If they are, that's their own employees' fault. And, and them as a council because.
I mean, they'd have to, they'd have to increase their rates, obviously, to make up for that difference. And I can't tell you the history of when or how that happened because I, I'm ignorant to that, but, but the, the underlying issue there is that we have our governmental entities providing a billing service for a privately owned company. I mean, we don't own this, this trash service. Um, we don't own the equipment and we don't even charge.
What our disposal fee pays for is to cover the expense of the facility and the expense to haul it to Salina. We don't charge, the tax dollars or the taxpayers do not get assessed a levy for the landfill. So our fee has to cover our expense to haul it off. That's what the seventy-two dollars is for. This, it has nothing to do with Randan and his collecting of the service. It is to ensure that we have the money to haul the trash that we currently have to the landfill in Salina, dispose of it. And a long time ago, they disposed of it in Topeka.
Well, I mean, but what I'm saying is, if you live in the city and you're paying on a bill to have a trash service as part of one of your utility bills, then it's up to that city to contract with who, whatever entity they would like. I mean, I think that the county is really creating a monopoly by making a mandate for all the cities within the county to contract with the same provider. I mean, that, that provides for no.
I think technically, I, and I wasn't here for that, but I think technically when the transfer station went in, the cities were asking the county to assist with that. But I, I don't know that a hundred percent sure. You bid on that process. Was it all?
That's too, that's too long ago.
But it seems to me like the cities were having a difficult time.
I can tell you this, if you try to do it any other way, if you put a trash service collecting from each individual house, you're gonna have trash piled up all over these towns because they're not gonna pay and they're not gonna pick it up. That's exactly what's gonna happen. And, and if they have to do that deal, everybody's rates is gonna go up too. Because I guarantee you, if you're gonna drive down the streets of town and those people haven't paid, they're not gonna pick it up. And, you know, if it's on their utility bill, I don't have any choice but to pay it. But you will, I guarantee you.
To set it up.
There'll be a hundred houses in this town that those people aren't paying, and it isn't gonna get picked up. It's gonna get piled up there and then the cities are gonna have to come in and clean it up.
Well, the city of Beverly is already experiencing that where they had because, um, I didn't realize that they were picking and choosing. Somebody could walk in and say, I wanna pay trash. And I said, no, they have to pay, they have to at least pay the disposal fee. The city should at least be charging whatever it is for the disposal fee, where they need to be letting us know to add it to the tax rule. Because everybody has afforded the right to dump whatever trash that they have for free at the landfill. They have to pay for tires, they have to pay for construction demolition material, but their household trash can be dumped for free at the landfill.
For free, it's for seventy-two dollars.
Well, yes, for a seventy-two dollar fee, they can dump, I, I, I can tell you, we cleaned out my grandma's farm and dumped a heck of a lot more than seventy-two dollars worth of trash in that landfill.
Well, and that's convenient in years when it's convenient, but I'm still saying that to mandate a contract that someone is bound to and for the county to tell the cities that they have to do that. I mean, each city could sign their own contract and I personally, the second thing is, I don't see any benefit with these contracts. We're signing multiple year contracts with a company that just increases the price. That's not the point of a contract. The point of a contract is to guarantee yourself, like we did this morning with the Lincoln Park Manor new generator. He came in, locked us in for a price. We know we're not getting a price increase that second year at all. And then he already projected the price increase for the third year and we agreed to it. So we're not shorting ourselves by letting someone come in and say, oh, well, this year's four percent. And you already signed with me, so you're guaranteed.
To project out fuel prices for five years, the rate's gonna go up.
No, I'm, I'm not asking him to do anything. I'm asking the county to be responsible and say, we'll sign for one year.
You wanted me to lock in a fuel price for five years, I'm gonna pick the highest number out there and that's the one I'm gonna go with.
Well, I find it interesting that other companies that provide trash services, not only do they contract and do their own billing with the individual who's getting their trash picked up, but then they also pay by the weight when they dump it. So really, we have no idea how much our county is subsidizing the weight that is being delivered to Salina on our behalf. Because we're just letting this company dump for free. That's who's dumping for free, Dawn, not the person that comes to the landfill. The company is dumping for free.
He's just collecting and taking, depositing. It would be no different than me driving the trash out there. I just choose to pay him to take my trash out.
It's not a choice. See, you're mandating it. That's the difference.
That's, that's the city's options.
No, we, we're signing that though for the entire county and I'm saying that we can't.
Because the city contracted with us to have us provide a trash provider for them. If the city of Sylvan would like to remove out of that, the city of, uh, Sylvan can, can say, I don't wanna contract with Lincoln Park anymore. And then they can go out to their own.
These contracts, because I've never seen that the cities.
They're, they're in my office.
For how many years?
I think since the beginning of time.
Well, the transfer station weren't in.
Nineteen ninety-two?
Yeah. But when we started having to transfer the trash, everything changed.
Well, I mean, it's just odd, it's oddly convenient that we have one provider for the county who doesn't have any business outside of the county and that completely defeats the purpose of anyone doing a competitive bid.
Other counties' trash from coming into our transfer station and we have to haul it to Salina.
But if we're charging by the pound or ton.
Then we would need two employees out there.
By the pound.
It, it, I think what there was, was there was two options, either, because I, I believe that the landfill used to be disposed as you dis- disposed out there. So like, if you took the trash out there, you paid. I'll tell you what, what a lot of the farmers did, and my grandmother was one of them. They dumped over the side of the river instead. They dumped in the dishes, they dumped every place else. So.
Are we assuming that that's not happening now?
It's, it's probably happening now. But when the landfill or when the transfer station went in, if my understanding of this is correctly, they used to have a landfill you charged by the bag and you dumped it. When they put the landfill, the transfer station in, they had to ensure that they were generating enough money to pay for the expense to haul it to Salina. So they chose to do this route. And I wanna say they had some public hearings about it, but I was a senior in high school the year that that was occurring. But I'm almost positive that my grandma went to some of the public hearings. And this board as a whole decided instead of charging by the pound as you were dumping, it was better to charge a yearly fee and you could dump as many pounds as you wanted to. But we can go back, you can always change that, but you have to hire the staff in order to do that.
They can't wait, everybody tries to go and attract.
No, but in a, I mean, there's a scale out there. So in a normal circumstance, what would happen is, the company sets his price for each household and he says, okay, I'm gonna have to charge you fifteen dollars per household because I'm going out to the transfer station and when I dump, it's X amount of tons per week.
But if you bill him, then you must bill every resident that crosses that scale as well.
No, that's not, no, that is not, no. We can still have a fee, yes.
Yes, no.
Who is he picking up out in the country? Who is he picking up out in the country, Dawn?
Uh, he picked up my grandma's out in the country, yes, dumpster.
So they're paying him individually.
To collect.
There's a dumpster in Vesper that they chip into, right?
Yeah, and only Vesper people can put the stuff in.
But they, but they chip in.
But that's what I'm saying, you're saying, they're paying him to collect, so he is running a business where he has no fees to dispose of his own businesses.
He doesn't charge a fee for the trash.
He just charges the fee for the service to collect it. We are charging the fee for the trash, so if you take that away and you start billing him, then you must bill every single person that delivers their trash. And we would stop collecting it on their tax roll and we would stop billing the city for it, it's one way or the other. I, I don't understand how that is not understandable.
It's however we say it is actually, and there are more than just two options. And what I'm saying is, if you're gonna, if this board is gonna continue to allow him to have a contract. I would suggest that it would be one year, because there's no benefit to the county signing multiple years. And I'll leave it at that, that, I mean, if you're gonna keep the same system, I'm not personally for that system. But to sign a contract where you're allowing that person to mandate their prices over you for multiple years because you.
Don't look at me, look at them.
Well, you're defending it, I mean, you're defending.
I'm not defending it, I'm just telling you, this is how we do it.
Yeah, but you also said there are only two options and that's not true.
Well, I think that there is, because how would, how would that be fair?
Because if I have a Lincoln County tag on my license plate and my vehicle hauls up there and. Put, attach, attach the county bill to your vehicle then.
But the seventy-two dollars that Randy is, that the resident is paying, okay, let's use Sharon for example, do you dis- dispose of in that, that dumpster?
No.
No, okay.
I pay seventy-two, I just haul it out myself, but there are people, my neighbors do get it picked up by Randan. I suppose they pay him separately, right?
But they're paying him to collect it, they're not paying to dispose it.
Property taxes, I pay the seventy-two bucks as a farmer, right?
Right.
I think so, I'm not sure.
Any property does.
Yeah, okay, well, I didn't know farmers were different.
It's, no, it's both, it's, it's residential and, and that's what I'm saying.
Neighbors that have it picked up by him, I don't, I haul it out myself.
So you were paying for the trash and the disposal.
Through my taxes, but then my neighbor would pay Randan separately to haul it out there, right?
Right.
They don't have to, they can.
But they're, but they're still paying us to dispose of it, they're just paying him to pick it up and deliver it.
To haul it, deliver it.
Yes.
That's all he's doing, delivering, I mean.
He's, he's charging them a convenience fee.
I, I, my taxes as a farmer, I'm paying the landfill seventy-two dollars a year, or whatever it is.
Yes, it's seventy.
I don't know for a farmer, okay.
So, so let's, let's put it in this realm, if I, let's say we charged Randan to dispose of. And Randan started charging the fee. At, at some point in time, if you said, okay, Randy, you're gonna have to pay per pound. He's gonna come up with what a cost is per pound and the disposal. But then we're already collecting the seventy-two dollars from the landfill, how do you differentiate? So then are you saying, well, anybody that he collects, we won't charge the seventy-two dollars for, how do we know which people he collects for and which people he doesn't? That's what I'm trying to say.
Because just like he said, he doesn't pay him to collect his, he pays the fees.
I know, but if you were charging Randy to do that, then you're charging that resident. Because you're charging Randy and Randy's gonna pass that cost around, down to the resident.
Works.
And then the resident is also gonna pay the county, so they're paying that bill twice.
No.
Yes, they are.
They're already, they're already paying it twice, because they're paying for convenience that they may or may not use because it's mandated to them. Yes.
They're not paying the same thing twice, it's separate, the disposal fee is separate from the collection. I don't know what's so difficult about figuring that out.
I'm surprised that as a prior business owner, that you have no concept of that situation there.
I think, I think the person that doesn't have the concept is not us.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Now I'm very confused, am I paying seventy-two dollars for property on the farm and seventy-two dollars?
Is anyone living in that residence?
No.
It's occupied residence.
But utilities are the only occupied, is that true then in Lincoln also?
In the, in Lincoln, it's supposed to be every occupied residence, but I think they bill it based upon whether or not you have sewer. If you have sewer turned on, you get, you charge trash, if you don't, but I could be wrong.
That's not true, I know that's not true, because there are people that aren't billed for sewage. That have, aren't billed for trash that have sewage and electric and everything to their house.
In the city of Lincoln?
Nobody's living there.
In the city.
Because nobody's living there, so they applied for an exemption because nobody's living there.
I don't know.
In the country, it's that way, nobody lives there, you can have electricity in your house in the country if no one's living there, you're gonna be billed.
Well, it automatically gets billed unless they come in, like we've approved and say, there's no one in this house, can you stop billing it? But that's what.
Is that how they do it in the country, Dawn, uh, like?
I charge it to the tax.
Residential farm person has to pay, but if you got a farm, say that you run electricity out like for irrigation farm, they don't have to pay for. No one's living.
It's a parcel with a house on it.
With a house.
And a person in the house.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Not just for like a parcel.
Making houses out in the country, but, but they live in, and it's still got electricity.
They've probably gotten an automatic billing unless they've said, no, no one's living there, please stop billing.
Then it gets abated. Might as, and you would probably. But on the other hand, there are residents out there that aren't getting charged that, uh, somebody moves into and they don't bother coming in and telling you about it either. Oh, yeah, I know. But if it goes the other way, they're in here.
Well, like I said, if you keep the system that you've had in place, that's fine, but there is absolutely no advantage to signing for more than one year. None, no advantage to the county, in fact, it's a disadvantage to the county to do that.
Is this bid?
No, there's no bidding.
One is, so I've been in here, no one has ever bid other than him.
Have you put out for bids?
Yes, we have, we had a person that wanted to contract, we opened it up for bidding. And then they didn't put in a bid because they found out they had to have workman's comp. And all these insurances and their, and their truck had to be approved by the whoever. And then, so they didn't even bother to put in a bid.
Well, it's still a good practice on the county's part to solicit for bids, whether you receive them or not, it's just a practice, it should be a policy.
I would move an increase of fifteen cents.
Fifteen?
Fifty.
Is two thousand nineteen the third year of the three year, or was it five, I can't remember.
It's five years, I think.
It was three or five.
I was second. Any other discussion? Not, not those favors they have.
Aye.
May.
Okay, and then we need to approve the starting wage for Sayona case, I don't know if that's how you pronounce her name, but. You guys had moved to, or you had agreed to offer her twenty-five hundred a month, so I need a motion setting that wage.
I would move, I'll set the wage at twenty-five hundred a month for the HR person.
Well, I guess it's really employing her. Sorry, because.
Trade employer.
Yeah.
I was second. Any further discussion?
She's starting Wednesday, you said?
Yes.
Not all those favors they have.
Okay, so as Dave was here and already spilled the beans to you, our equipment is in, what are we doing for moving forward with our projects?
Well, the main piece of the puzzle is David, right? Or, or take David to you.
Well, one of my questions is, if the extension office is willing to pay rent. You know, if that was what, what the proposal was kind of put forth in a roundabout way. Wouldn't we, wouldn't it behoove the city to allow them to find a place to rent and pay into the private sector and. Generate some revenue back through the city, you know, and not, if they're gonna, I mean, if they're gonna pay someone. We can utilize our own space and have them pay rent to have a downtown office and keep Main Street alive. I mean, I guess my question is, are we considering paying for our own office space somewhere? And still providing free space to external, uh, agencies? Or are we gonna expect them to cope with their own expenses? I'm, I guess I'm not sure where that conversation was headed, because I feel like that one was dropped off there with that option. As far as occupying three spaces in our courthouse for free.
I guess that I'm not convinced they need three spaces in the courthouse. I guess I would think we could take the one corner space and they can figure out how to utilize the other two spaces.
I would agree with that.
I think that's, that's true, I, I think that the saying that we are giving it to them for free is, is a misnomer. Because that is a tax-supported or tax-funded entity, so we are paying taxes. To that extension office, and if they have to go out and rent space for money, that's only gonna be added to the tax roll. Because that's the only way they can do it, so, I mean, it's, it's not that it's totally free, it looks free. But we have to remember, we pay property tax to, to that organization to provide office space for them, so. It's kind of a, you know, the other thing that I would say is that. We are very fortunate to have the head of the post office extension service in Lincoln, Kansas, and. And this may move it out, which, you know, I, I'm not sure that's good or bad, I'm not just saying that, but. I, I do agree that, that I think probably it, uh, we need the office space. And that room seems to, would suffice, and I think it is their problem to figure out what they're gonna do.
Uh, clarification is, I'm not devaluing the services that the extension office provides. I mean, I utilize 4H and their, you know, that's, what I'm saying is, that our county courthouse is providing that space for free. The taxpayers are paying for it, sure, but our, it, it's our courthouse space that we are providing. Um, because it's my understanding that not only is there no rent, but they don't even cover their own utility bills. So really, they're just paying for their phone line so that we don't have an additional expense. But we're still paying for all the water usage, electric usage, heating for that space. And I would hate to see us choose an option where we're gonna have an.
My point is, wherever they go, the taxpayer is going to pay for them.
Well, I mean, I don't know who sets their budget, but that's something for their board to deal with.
But it could result in an increase in what they levy.
But I, I, I think that's the only viable option that we have at this time is to move down here to this office space.
I think we hit the corner.
I think we have let them expand over the years and I think now is the time to, they're gonna have to contract somehow, you know. And however they can deal with it, I think they have thirty days to do it. And I would move.
I was second.
To inform the Post Rock Extension Agency that the southwest east room will no longer be available, we need it for county offices.
Is there any further discussion? Not all those favors they have.
Aye.
Do you want us to deliver that message?
Yeah.
Yes, I'd like to.
Yes, I think we should.
Anything else?
No.
Should we? Leave the discussion open for the economic development office and their office to talk about those options as well as far as. Because there is a separate room of the door. And they were concerned about having privacy issues for one person, you know, that the option there to switch is, is open for them. You know, we're not going to object to that, I mean, I don't think we necessarily need to mandate that, but.
Yeah, I don't think we need to mandate it right now, I think that, I think we need to take a look at why they can't consolidate three rooms into two. I mean, there is. Well, there's no further business.
Oh, wait, I, I do, I have a few things I wanna say, as far as the nursing home committee. Um, this letter that I think is, was just given to you guys at the Monday meeting. Um, yeah, because it was dated the twenty-fifth. So what the auditor is saying is that, let me find the line so I can read it for. We would propose that as decisions are made as to the assistance required by the county from us, that we will then decide. If an agreed upon procedures or consulting engagement letter is appropriate, okay, so we don't have an actual engagement letter at this time, but. What they're saying is they're willing to work with us, but he also says, um, where did I read that?
I think they're wanting to see exactly what services they're gonna have to provide.
Right. But there was something about, basically, it was asking us to determine what the scope of their work needs to be. And I think the commission does need to do that for the committee, because the committee. You know, we were given the instruction, we gave the instructions to the committee to basically search out options and find answers to these questions that we don't. Know, you know, it's, it's not in our.
But I'm not too sure until we get more information from Mr. Hay, if we're gonna know exactly the scope.
And have you been, have you been given the list of questions from Mr. Hay that he, that he gave to the committee? He did.
Yeah, yeah, we have a copy of that, we got a copy of that last week, it was in with his other stuff, right?
Uh, it would, it would have been his first correspondence to us since the engagement letter.
I haven't seen you.
You have, oh, you didn't get your email, did you?
I don't have any computer.
Yeah, his, his.
Okay, so we need to get you that, um.
I'm sure I have it on email.
I'm not sure when I'll get back up.
Um.
Okay, so.
Dawn may have a copy of it, do you have a copy of the packet from?
Questions that Mr. Hay sent as his first correspondence to our committee, I don't think Mr. Wallace has that. And he may have the email, but I think that needs.
I'm sure I have the email, I have.
Um.
Private too.
Did Jennifer send it to you guys or did she just send it?
Maybe, she may have sent it, but he said he doesn't have him on the, he doesn't have it in print, in print.
His email, no.
But I guess what I'm saying, what I'm getting from this correspondence from the auditor is that he needs us to direct him. As far as what his work is going to be, because he hasn't provided a letter of engagement, because he doesn't know what we're asking him to do. So are we asking him to perform an audit, because I think that's what his role would be. Not only to get us some corrected information from what may or may not have been skewed. Um, but also to show us statistically and numerically what we're looking at as far as future operations for that particular business. I mean, at this time, the only thing that Mr. Otting has provided as far as information is on behalf of the hospital. He did write up an analysis of, and you saw that, I think, of, of what the potential cost could be if all the expenses remain the same and nothing. It, it wasn't calculating if we combined any efforts, but he was basically just saying what those losses may or may not be.
I think that was if the hospital took over the operation.
Right, right, but I'm saying, other than that, as far as him being an auditor, he's not part of the committee to make decisions, he's there to do an audit. So I think we need to instruct for that audit, but that comes at a cost to us. But I don't see how we can invest in a multimillion dollar business without having that solid financial information.
I think we made a motion to employ Eric Otting last week to work with the committee in whatever capacity they needed.
Yeah, I think, I think we've hired, I think the committee needs to tell him which direction he needs to go. Yeah, I think, I think we've heard it higher and I think the committee needs to tell him which direction he needs to go.
Okay, but that's the whole reason he wrote this little introduction to his paragraph is. He's proposing that as the county determines the assistance that is needed by him. Then he will provide an engagement letter. So we, we need to actually. I mean, I think it's our job to oversee the committee. If we let the committee do as.
But I think the committee needs to send a recommendation to us to. If they want exactly what they want him to do or whatever.
Okay, I will then ask the committee what their purpose is for hiring an auditor and then I'll bring it. Okay, and I'll bring it back to you on Monday. That sounds good. That's what I wanted to know from you.
They will adjourn until tenth?
No, the twelfth. Yeah.
Which will just be convinced Kansas thing to vote on the twelfth. We won't have a regular commission meeting next week, so.
Which I did forget one thing. Till I could smell it when I walked upstairs. We have a sewer line leak between the district board and here. It's not leaking, leaking, but they think it might be cracked enough to allow gas out, but the gravity still pushes everything down. And there is a horrific odor that's coming from our office. In fact, on Friday, it was so bad it made your eyes water. But um I told them that. I think we have to wait till after the election to do anything. And then the the crevice cutout that's in our office is filled with um sawdust. So they'll have to suck it out as it, we're assuming they must have used it for insulation, but where they built the. The mechanism, it's backwards, so it's almost like they probably put up a board to build it, put up another board and filled it. But.
What she's saying is they have a chase that runs through her office and the pipes inside of it.
So they'll have to do something. While they were up here, they also.
Is there moisture? Like, is that?
They couldn't find it.
Smelling it because.
I think it's like the issue we had at the nursing home, the vent pipe is deteriorated. And remember, we had an odor issue out there cuz the vent pipe is deteriorating inside the wall.
It doesn't smell unless they flush or they wash their hands.
From upstairs?
Yeah. Um which kind of makes them think that there's a crack, but whatever it is, it's not big enough. Or there's enough of a drop that it's dropping through before it actually has a chance to leak out. But I'm assuming it's not over by your vault.
Is that where it comes from?
On the other side.
Outside wall?
It's like the, right there by where the copier is at. So um I don't really know what the plan of attack. I I don't know if they're thinking. I don't know, do they cut out a section or do they just replace the whole thing?
I would say they'll probably, wherever their pipe is below that, they'll just go from there all the way up with the never, be my guess.
Okay, and then ties in right there.
Yeah.
Cuz that is the pipe that goes straight up there. But um. I told them that if we could get by through the election, then after election week, maybe we could get them back. And of course, they'll have to schedule it in, but we we would move our equipment out so that way they don't get anything that sawdust sucked in to our computers.
You know, you're dealing with cast iron there and it's just better to.
Replace the whole thing.
I would say absolutely go plastic all the way to the top.
I don't think there's any reason for them to be using that, is there?
Well, they used the restroom and they had pork on Friday. And of course, then there was a huge fiasco of. I misunderstood Chris or Chris misunderstood. I'm not really sure, but I thought she told me we had three minutes to get up and get them in. So we went and grabbed the plumbers and we barged right into court and there they were still on the bench addressing the judge. And so then it was like I didn't know whether to stop or go, stop or go, so. I might have bolted to the bathroom and prayed to God I didn't get contempt at court.
I guess if the.
Made it through the metal.
Restroom is out of order. It's out of order, isn't it? I mean, I'm sorry. You know, I I think you, I think you tell them, it's it's out of order. We're not using it until we get the problem fixed. If it, cuz if it doesn't.
Emergency, we know that it flushes. It just cuts a terrible gas.
There's no reason to, there, we have other restrooms. I mean, that's what you do in your house, isn't it? I mean, I'm sorry. Sorry, maybe it is convenient to walk out and do it.
Well, I will go hang a sign and ask him.
Outside one.
Ask him not to use it then.
By order of the county commission, this restroom is officially out.